All right, it's November 21st, 4:37. We're going to call this special meeting of the common council quarter. Clerk, please call the floor.
Ayalo, Burmester, Friend, Miola, Beatrice Williamson, Colasimo Testa, Glemy, present.
Correct. Please rise with flag allegiance followed by all the silence for the cease and nerves of the council. Flag allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is the same, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we begin, I just want to state the agenda this evening. This is a special meeting. Our typical order of business with common council guests and communications with the mayor, et cetera, is not part of tonight's order of business. This special meeting was called specifically to deal with both proposed amendments to the zoning code, but then also to deal with some discrepancies between Ecode 360 and what was actually passed on the night of February 3rd, 2021. For anyone who's either watching YouTube or this video in the future, there's nothing... The reality is what was passed on February 3rd, 2021 is what we've been proceeding with, but there's been just issues found with some of the numbering, et cetera, that we want to straighten out as well. So, we do have pieces from council member Colasimo Testa, and we also have a piece, which one is it here? Is it in this, right here? We have a piece that came down from Corporation Council as well. So, at this time, I'd like to open the floor to start discussing simply the ordinance that was passed February 3rd, 2021, and the actual numbering of that ordinance.
Mr. President, may I have the floor, please, sir?
Yes, ma'am, floor.
It says, "There will be further ordained the prior publications, Code 360 of Rochester, New York. It is our copyright to renumber the sections."
Mm-hmm.
Is that online? Am I correct? Okay.
The new numbers are online. However...
So, where's the discrepancy that...
It was pointed out to me, though, and it is the case. Some of the actual titles were also not the same, the actual words of the titles. Either way, we do have to act... Now, first off, let me, little history here. We passed this, right? And it took, I was looking for the date, but I had only asked the clerk today what the date was.
February 3rd, 2021.
No, when it was actually updated on Ecode.
Oh, when is it posted?
For months, for months after this was updated, myself, Corporation Council, the clerk, we had been looking and say, "Okay, when is this going to be there?" So that we could double check that if what they put up there was correct, right? Six to eight months went by, and then they finally finished all this stuff, and we've just been using what was passed on February 3rd, 2021 as our reference, not Ecode 360. Here we are, we're starting to use Ecode 360. And when I say "we" that's general, me, some other people.
Administration.
Well, no, administration was using Ecode and the ordinance to make sure the zoning text was correct. Point being, it needs to be corrected somehow because the ordinance that we passed that evening, even though it has this, we need to make sure that what's on Ecode 360, this meaning the ordinance we passed in 2021, we need to be sure that the actual text of that ordinance is accurate. And there were some discrepancies in the titles. So, that was my only actual concern with that. But this is, this is the one order of business. The other is so that Councilwoman Testa may move her amendments to the planning board. That was the other piece of the business this evening. So, we're going to start with this.
Can I have the floor, please?
Mr. Giorgio was asking for the floor.
I just, I just want to clarify, so Mike is correct, at least with respect to what was up on Ecode. It did take a long time, partially due to COVID, partially due to the extent of how much had to be published. Typically, how we do the publishing within the city is we do it quarterly. So, every time you pass, you know, a certain amount of ordinances, every, you know, four times a year, it gets reviewed by Corporation Council, they get sent to the publisher. Because there are several other things that you guys pass that don't get published to Ecode, including resolutions, et cetera, et cetera.
She has the floor, she has the floor.
So, once that got done, I did look, it did match. Obviously, I understand the council's concern about the numbering. I did prepare an ordinance as a technical amendment so that you can clear up and so that the legislative history per se and the documentation is clear of what you have. I'm not aware of any discrepancies between the titles. I'd like to see those and review those, as probably would Brian, to confirm that it's not just a mistake by Ecode.
Yeah, which we would have to make them fix it, right?
Correct.
Or we just mimic what Ecode has.
Well, hang on.
So, I would like to do that before there's any, you know, drastic changes in votes. Because the other thing I will say is, if we were to pass, or at least rescind and replace the entire zoning ordinance, it would be an entirely new document. It would have to go back to Planning Board, and there's a lot of unintended consequences with that. So, I will just point that out. But as far as clearing up the numbering, I do understand that it probably makes sense to have, you know, a clear legislative history about what those numbers are. The administration has been working off of Ecode and those numbering. So, anytime that we prepare legislation and send it down to you, or you ask me to look at legislation and make sure where it fits within the zoning text, I look and make sure it fits in those defined section numbers, and then I make sure it's good enough.
So, in all seriousness, though, the reason I brought this up at the beginning of the meeting was for two things. One, anything we do tonight, whether we go with the technical amendment referenced by Corporation Council Giorgio, the redone section numbers on the original ordinance, which does replace just the section numbers that Samantha Colasimo Testa is presenting, along with the amendments, just so that we can get this done, not have to go back and forth, we should have the Planning Board review all of the things that we passed tonight, even if it's just the numberings. And the reason I say that is, yes, we've passed like the 2,000-foot rule. We changed, there was one other thing we changed in the zoning, I believe, the chickens and bees, right? So... Well, so, so, so here's my point, though, here's my point. If we were doing things based on the numbering that's in Ecode 360, even if we could go argue in court and say, "Oh, but the numbers were different, it's the same text, et cetera," someone could go back to the original February 3rd, 2021, and granted, it does say, "The numberings will change." We still didn't pass that by ordinance. As like, once it was done, we bring it back down and repass, say, "Okay, this is what's on the books." That way, if Ecode 360 goes up in flames, we're going to go back to, we're going to go back to the original ordinances to rebuild our book, if you will, you know?
And the only other thing I would add is you have passed those ordinance, you rescinded a section regarding the chickens and the bees, you've added some other things here and there. That, those are not reflected in that February 3rd document, that was all subsequently thereafter.
Right, so once we're done with all this, we should, we should be going back through again, even if it's a tertiary action, to review everything that's up on Ecode 360, minus what we haven't updated yet, and make sure it matches if we want to use Ecode 360 for what we're using.
May I have the floor, please?
Yes.
Thank you. So, what I did was, and you'll see in the attachments, in the title where it says, we'll go to the ordinance where it says number one, where it says "the attached." So, what we did was, we went through each of the sections, and I printed out Ecode 360 and actually matched the titles and the paragraphs, or the section numbers, which what was on Ecode. So, we actually went through the entire document, changed all the wording and so on and so forth to actually match what was on Ecode. So, the section numbers now match what was passed, and so does each of the divisions, subsections, so on and so forth, inside the document now. And it does reflect the updated code of ordinance, such as the chickens and bees and the other thing that we passed. The biggest issue that I have is, I don't amend legislation on Ecode. I amend legislation in an ordinance. So, what happened was, the council put a little blurb at the end of the ordinance that they passed in February 2021 that said, "The section numbers are now going to reflect what's on Ecode." The problem is, is I go to the ordinance and I amend an ordinance. I don't amend what's on Ecode. Therefore, what's on Ecode has to reflect the actual ordinance, because the ordinance does not reflect what's on Ecode. Does that make sense? So, for example, now, I put, I went and put this legislation in for the amendments that I had, okay? In the ordinance, because the ordinance is not updated, which I, again, I don't amend Ecode, I amend the city ordinance, section 2-1529, excuse me, 2-29156 use table, is not, is not, does not reflect that in Ecode. It reflects it on the ordinance. So, now I have to go back and amend that piece of legislation to reflect, once this ordinance is now passed, to reflect what's on Ecode. Because I don't, again, you don't amend legislation on Ecode. Ecode is a reference, it's an online tool that local municipalities use when they pass a law to have it easily accessible. I don't amend Ecode, again, that's, it's got to be clarified. And to me personally, even the amendments that you put in for the 2,000-foot rule doesn't reflect that the ordinance that was passed on February 3rd, 2021. So, to me, that would not even be a legible piece of legislation. Again, because the ordinance is what we passed, that's law. So, and I'm not being vicious by any means, okay? But it has to be clarified in the ordinance that those are the proper sections as it follows on Ecode. Therefore, when we do amend legislation, we know what we're actually amending, because the section numbers will be labeled, plain and simple.
Okay, I'm going to take the floor back for just a second. The ordinance number three, that is sponsored by minority and majority leaders, that came down from the Law Department. That's what, this is attempting to do. I would have expected we would have done this immediately after, you know, knowing Ecode finished their filing. I just went on for, it went on very long. Now, if...
I mean, Sam, was it going to renumber the ordinance?
Hang on, hold on a second. I would ask, though, because I did review this, that if we pass this, okay, the technical amendment, if you will, I'll just call it that for descriptive sake, this still goes to Planning Board, and then we finish it that way. That way, if anyone calls out the process on that, they still looked at it. And I would also request, now, this just came down, obviously, today, that in this, we either add to a "be it further ordained," for example, that the final form with the proper section numbers be printed and filed with this ordinance. That way, if someone does go to our book, our council book, they could say, "Look, here's the final form."
That's the point of order, that's what ordinance number one does.
That's my point.
Can I ask a question about that?
That's my point.
Can I have the floor for a minute? So, when, all right, I get this idea of there being a discrepancy problem, we don't want discrepancies. But when you go to the, you know, what you just referred to, Mr. President, as the council proceedings book, it's not, the only thing that's in there is a two-page ordinance making reference to something else. There's the ordinance itself...
That is a separate issue that I brought up last week. The full ordinance should be in that book as well.
So, okay, so that's a separate question. So, what I'm, like, I have at home, the, you know, the draft that I printed out from the website a long time ago in order to read it and read it, and put it in a binder and all that. Let's say that it, you know, that it got lost in a fire, and I said to Melissa, "Hey, I need a new one of those printed out in three-hole punch for me." Would she go, where would she go other than 360?
She has a copy of the one that was submitted to us on February 2nd, which is the one that was passed.
Okay. So, that's, and that's the one that is inconsistent with the one on Ecode 360?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
To what extent is discussed? Now, I will say this, though, regarding the proceedings, that should have been in there. That's why some of our books from some years are this thick, and some of our books from some years are this thick. Because every single thing that we pass should be in the proceedings.
Right, and that one is not in the 2021 proceedings.
Right, right, it should just be in there, because I went to look at the same thing, and it wasn't there. I had to go find the one that was passed.
Right, right, okay.
Thank you.
Actually, Mark Williamson wants the floor, real quick.
So, I got a question, so why don't we just...
This is more of a committee, this is more of a discussionary meeting at this point, so...
So, why don't we pass these things, get them over, so we can get to the planning board, Mr. Giorgio? Because the only thing I care about, the city can defend itself in a court of law.
Exactly.
That's all I care about. So, if the Jurisheul says we're good to go with the planning board and with all this other stuff that we're going to acknowledge, that we all acknowledge now, why are we going to just beat it up?
All right, so, let me step in, let me step in his chair for a minute. Councilwoman Colasimo Testa has a piece that takes the exact same text from the ordinance and changes the section numbers, and the Law Department sent down a technical amendment piece, and this body needs to figure out which one they're going to decide to move with tonight.
Common sense was also, you should have the ordinance attached to what you're passing. This is the same thing that you're going through now.
Hey, hold on one second, hold on one second. Oh, hang on. Councilwoman Colasimo Testa, you have the floor.
Because she does not have the ordinance.
No, hey, you have the floor. You're going to give the floor next, I'm giving you the floor. You have the floor.
Thank you. This is the whole thing that he went through, we just, we just discussed, okay? The ordinance was passed without the legislation attached to it. The ordinance as it stands right now is incorrect, plain and simple. Again, what ordinance number one does is that it rescinds and replaces, it calls for a public hearing, it goes there, so that you're not finding old documents and new documents and unnumbered documents and that. Everything is numbered, it matches what's on Ecode. There should be no further discussion, because we've been going through this for two weeks now, okay? Call for the public hearing, get the ordinance done, get the legislation that's supposed to be attached with it, and move on, because this is ridiculous now, that we're talking about a technical amendment. This should have been done by the Law Department. The city spent $170,000 on the zoning code, $8,000 to bind it, and I had to take, I had to take five hours out of my time with me and Drew to go and renumber it because it wasn't done properly? It's ridiculous.
I'm going to take the floor back. With reference to the money, the money was spent to create the new zoning code.
Right, and you think the most important part, the legal piece, would have been...
No, but my point is, a portion of those monies were to organize the sections, et cetera. If you want to talk about that piece of the money, but the entire $170,000 did not go to the fact that the numbers weren't worked out. It was the content of the text.
Or only to the $8,000.
Yes, well, that's my point. You would like the floor?
If I can have just a point to clarify, there are several sections within the entire zoning document that makes reference to many of the other sections that are not correct. So, if you want to do that and go individually through the entire document and correct each of those sections, you have to read the entire document.
I did, it's highlighted.
And read the substance of those sections, because it makes reference to those other ones, and those would also have to be corrected. And my suggestion is to do it as is, and you asked about including a section to attach the full printed Ecode. That would not be a problem, it would be in the proceedings to make clear, I can add that provision in. It would be expected as part of, you know, our administrative procedures to attach it anyway.
All right, so regardless, I do think my recommendation to the council would be, either way you go, make sure you pass this even to the Planning Board, that we will have that time to review it and make sure it's all good. So, once we button this up, it's done. All right, Councilwoman Miola. Councilwoman Miola, you, did you want the floor?
First off, the legislation that we have adopted the Ecode. So, that is gospel that we need to reference in our future in any type of amendment that we have for the zoning board, number one. Because any document that we had, anything that we had hard copy is all wrong, because this legislation trumps it, we voted on it, okay? This is a system, let's go by procedures, okay? So, Ecode's the gospel right now, all right? With that stated, any type of amendment, okay, that is misunderstood through PDF that is filed on there, okay, that is different, that Samantha produced, we can always amend that and committee the section number. Very simple. Just amend the section number because the intent is correct, but the section number is wrong. So, any type of stuff that she would like to change, okay, during it, that she missed, because she read the wrong document that was supposed to be gospel, I understand that. Thirdly, okay, that if there's any title, as you said, that is improper, that's different than what we're supposed to have entitled, okay? I think we should go through Corporate Council first, make sure that's correct, then do each piece of legislation separately to change the title so it's in compliance with Ecode, all right?
If you do, hang on a second. With the third point, if you did do that and you went through that, you'd have to go through Planning Board for everything because of our processes.
Not for a title, I don't think we need to go through Planning Board.
If the titles were wrong and we gave Ecode 360 a document with the correct titles, and they put it up there wrong, then they should just be correcting what their work they did wrong.
That's correct, and I think we can tell that, that's absolutely, Michael, it'd be easier that way without pressing legislation, absolutely.
May I have the floor one more time?
Hang on just one second. There's two things we need to deal with tonight. The one is the numbers of this document. The second thing are the amendments that Samantha Colasimo Testa wants to propose and move to the Planning Board for review regarding the meeting the other night, basically. And before we move on, the whole discussion that started around the gas stations, et cetera, brought all this to light, and as much as there's definitely some tension going on, we're all trying to fix this, so let's just, you know, she found a lot, she did find some mistakes that we need to move on, so let's move that way.
Can I just have the floor one more time?
You have the floor one more time. Now, we've got to move to the legislation.
I actually did go through the zoning document and the one that we did update and print it out. I did go through and amend the sections so that the sections did reflect what was actually amended to prior councils. So, all those sections in there do reflect what was actually passed on the invalid zoning ordinance.
Okay, but I have another question for you.
Sure.
We have made modifications since then.
Yes.
Chickens and bees, 2,000 feet. Are those in there as well?
Yes, yep. I mean, just go through, everything's highlighted.
It is for the floor to decide.
I printed it, I amended it, everything's, everything's in the ordinance that is attached that we did. It is all up to date following the new zoning code.
Either way, it should go to Planning Board.
It has to go to Planning Board, no matter what, that's the ordinance, and that's why you got to call for the public hearing.
Councilwoman Beatrice?
Yes. Just one thing, real quick on this, and I'm trying to learn. All I know is, Councilwoman Colasimo has put a ton of time into this. She has all the documentation, she has it there. Why can't we pass this, let it go to the Law Department, let it go to the Planning Board, and let's fix it right? Let's just fix it. We've had nothing but problems with this since February. Every time something new comes up, we go into the zoning code, and there was a problem. There was a problem with chickens and bees, there was a problem with convenience stores, obviously...
That was material.
Okay, but obviously, we have a problem with this code, with the zoning code. So, why can't we just do, she has many amendments, let's get it right, number it right, get it right, and move on?
So, this, this came to light because people wanted to modify the zoning code, and they didn't know whether they should work off the ordinance, which you should, you know, we need to work off, and they noticed it was different. So, the floor needs to decide. We need to introduce one or the other and move on something. I'm the chair, I can't do that, because I'm trying to call the floor to do something.
Can I have the floor for a moment?
Yes.
Mr. Giorgio, can you explain to us why the technical, why you consider the technical amendment, so ordinance number three preferable to ordinance number one, which actually lists all the changes that would need to be made?
Because you're then rescinding and replacing with an entire thing, which means it has to go entirely through Planning Board. Now, this, Mike and I disagree slightly.
You don't think the technical one has to go through Planning Board?
I believe it does too, yeah.
So, Mike and I, Mike and I disagree, and the reason I say that is because you passed it with the Ecode is allowed to renumber. The only thing you're doing, you're not changing substance, it's strictly the...
So, who's changing the ordinance then, with a technical amendment? Who is actually amending the actual ordinance then to reflect what's on Ecode? Who is doing that? Because it's not there.
No, Sam, Councilwoman Testa, please let her finish. That's why I asked for that other piece.
The big issue is having it clear, so in the legislative history, when people do go back, they know which section numbers have been put into place. So, therefore, like, in doing it this way, you're saying, "This is the document we passed. Ecode did the numbering like we asked, we have those new numbers. Here's the document with all those new numbers, you don't have to do anything else other than say that this is what those new numbers are, and we can proceed forward with those numbers that they've already..."
Councilperson Friend, no, Councilperson Friend technically still has the floor.
So, so let's say that we do it that way, right? Your, the, I don't remember which number is which, three. Then what becomes, I mean, if the idea is, again, to go back to basics, we've got two documents that are inconsistent with one another, and the question is, which one do we refer to as the legally authoritative document? No, 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 let me...
Mr. Giorgio, hang on, because I would like to answer that question rather than you.
Right, so we've got the Ecode 360 version, we've got the ordinance we actually passed. That's the whole problem here that we're trying to solve. If we pass your ordinance, your ordinance, the technical amendment one, how, what then becomes the authoritative thing that I can put in my brand-new shiny three-ring binder?
That is why I asked for something to be added to the be it ordained, to file the final copy of the version with the proper section numbers with this ordinance in the actual proceedings of the council in the minutes, then that'll be that document. And then procedurally, that's why when you go to our books or Ecode or any type of minutes from the council, you end up with, "This was last amended in 1971, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera," right? This would be the same thing, you'd go back to this, and you'd see "last amended, et cetera, et cetera."
Right, so may I, then, does an ordinance one, in fact, the one, of these two competing ordinances, isn't ordinance one the one that actually does that work by actually changing all the section numbers?
It does.
I'm not trying to vote, Rick, I really just want this to get it out of the way.
I think you guys are actually in the same...
I put a lot of effort in...
Wait, wait, that was in support of your...
No, yeah, no, I'm just saying, that's why, I'm not arguing like whether, I really, we literally changed the entire ordinance. I attached it so that you would have that document bounded to it. So, number one has, I didn't print out the 100, I think, we renumbered it, what is it, 160 pages now? So, we renumbered it all, we put the index to match what's on the actual zoning document. I just didn't print out the whole 160 pages because I didn't want to waste 1,000 sheets of paper.
Right, no, I get that. So, can I, do I retain the floor, Mr. President? So, again, what is the, what is the preference for number three, Mr. Giorgio, over number one?
Because you already passed it. You are now asking the Planning Board essentially to give a recommendation to replace and rescind the entire zoning ordinance, which is totally different. Like I said, you passed a zoning ordinance.
It's not totally different, just going to be some different section numbers.
I know, you're essentially replacing it, and by changing everything.
Right.
If you renamed, if you renamed ordinance one, a technical amendment to the zoning ordinance, it would be the same thing.
I don't think that...
Just without the ordinance attached, right?
I do think it's problematic to think that Ecode 360 is gospel, because they're just a contractual for-profit company that does this as a reference system. It's like saying Britannica is gospel. We're gospel.
We amend ordinances, we don't amend, we don't amend Ecode, right. And that's why it was confusing where, why this came to light, was because the section numbers are different on the ordinance that was passed in on Ecode. So, my recommendation would be to make a motion to move on ordinance number one and number two, because we have to call for a resolution to go, to call for the public hearing with that. So, that's, that's the motion that I'm going to make, is moving forward to rescind and replace. And that way, you have a formal, a formal document that you don't have ordinances that are mixed-match. It just, it gives the new ordinance its own section, it's attached to the, it's attached to the minutes of the meeting, and it's attached to the actual, attached to the actual book that would be bounded.
All right, I'm going to give Councilperson Ayalo the floor. And then I'm going to, after that, though, I am going to go around and explain what we need to do to pick this procedurally, so...
So, I think where I'm hung up is looking at February 3rd, 2021. What was attached to that literally says "draft." So, I don't know how this form was the ordained version, I would assume.
Because the draft was ordained, like, it became the ordained.
So, then it becomes...
It was the draft until we ordained it.
And then it wasn't ordained.
But it's ordained.
It doesn't come by until it's ordained.
Right, but, am I missing that?
So, you, the draft version got submitted to the council the day before, whatever it was before the meeting. You took that document, you then voted on it, and it said "draft" in it, and that got put in the minutes, and that got put subsequently there out there.
Right, I get that, but it's just to me an example of that we don't go off of this as the ordained version of the draft that was submitted versus what Ecode is.
Is that Ecode 360?
Yeah, yeah, this is what was passed that night and signed.
Oh, no, that's not, that's Ecode 360 in a different sense. That's where the document is still hosted that we passed that evening, not when you go to Ecode 360 and search the code.
Right, right, this is the signed version.
You're looking at the document. That's the same February 2nd document Brian has in his hand, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
Yeah, that was the final draft, if you will, that was ordained.
But, but the ordinance doesn't reflect to the numbering system that's on Ecode.
Right now.
So, now, so now you're passing the ordinance to reflect what's on Ecode. That way, if you put an amendment in, the amendment reflects the ordinance and what's on Ecode. Because if that was the case, we would have to go through each individual section and renumber, and renumber each individual one. I mean, the documents that I sent you, I mean, every single part of that code has to be renumbered, because nothing's correct.
All right. So, there's one of two things... So, there's one of two things, and none of this has anything to do with the other amendments, correct?
No, I gotta, I actually gotta amend them and reintroduce them to reflect what the actual ordinance would be.
Regardless of where you fall on this, because we have to actually vote in this to figure out what we're gonna do, all right, Councilwoman moved ordinance number one. If that gets seconded, okay, if that gets approved, then technically moving ordinance three would absolutely make no sense. If what the council, because the problem is we have to do this in series, okay, in serial. If the council members, if you want to move ordinance three instead, it would make sense, I'm just explaining how the votes will work out in sequence.
Are they inconsistent with one another logically, do they have one?
I think technologically, I feel like this is two different ways to do it.
Right, so they're not logically consistent with one another?
I do have one point that I don't think everybody comprehends. Not the section headings, not the numbering system.
Okay.
If you go and look through, so let's say I pick section, Article 10 Sign Regulations, and you go into section that's the purpose, intent, and applicability, it may reference a section that said XXX, unless you amended that to reflect the actual section number. That's gonna still say XXX.
No, we didn't. That's, we didn't.
Did you?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's not attached here.
Well, because I just said I didn't want to print out the 160-page document, so if you don't mind, can you print out, Mr. Giorgio, the 160-page document, and then just go through it?
I think it would be prudent to have her just skim through it.
I mean, having her... This is gonna have to go to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board's gonna wanna some comfort.
You're calling for a public hearing, it's going to Planning Board anyways.
That's it! That's it, I just didn't want to print out the 160 pages.
All right, so I'm gonna retain the floor, and I'm gonna bring the floor back here and re-explain what's going on here. If you would like to see the public hearing called and see the zoning text based on the numbering system Ecode 360 came up with overlaid the way Councilperson Testa did it, on top of what we passed on February 3, the actual ordinance we passed, not the Ecode 360 stuff, so what you were talking about, Councilperson Friend, then you would move to vote yes on ordinance one. If you want to do ordinance three instead, then you would vote no on ordinance one. I'm just explaining the sequence of events.
Neither of them can pass, you might correct the vote ordinances, and we would need nine votes.
Right, but we gotta send one of them to the Planning Board.
So, we, but could we put both into committee and send those to the Planning Board?
Yeah, but where's the original draft for ordinance number one, then? Who's fixing that, then? Do you get what I'm saying? Like, you still have to do your job and amend the ordinance in order to reflect, you can't just say "technical," because that's what you did originally, and now the whole friggin' thing's messed up. Because the one passed on February 3 doesn't reflect what's on Ecode. And you got people amending legislation in the wrong section numbers.
All right, so I'm gonna take the floor back, I'm gonna take the floor back. The only difference, Councilperson Friend, you asked this question, between, and this is...
Between one and three.
Between one and three is Corporation Council states that if you just pass this, the technical amendment, but I don't necessarily agree with it.
I don't, I just, all right, so let me ask that then. Mr. Giorgio, can you explain to us why number three wouldn't have to go to the Planning Board?
Because you are not changing substance, and the previous ordinance, which had already been approved by Planning Board, held your public hearing and was voted on, and that ordinance that authorized it to go to Ecode to be renumbered laid all that part out. Versus any other amendments that you make to zoning code now are actual text...
Whoa, hang on, I do need to stop you there, almost like a point of order from the chair. Councilperson Colosmo Testa is not proposing any other amendments. She's taking what's exactly in the code right now, based on the amendments made to the ordinance we passed on February 3 since then, changed all the section numbers to be appropriately referenced, and that's what she's submitting.
Can I ask a question for the attorney, really quick?
No, no.
She needs to come answering my question.
Yeah, yeah.
So, what I'm saying is, so if you wanted to make an amendment tomorrow and add something in, that's new, that's new to the zoning code, what is currently in the amendment that you passed, the only thing that you would be changing is those section numbers, which is not substance, it is the entirety of what you had passed, which is why I'm calling this a technical amendment, you're not changing the intent, you're not changing the substance, you're adding the correct numbers.
Let me retain the floor. What doesn't make sense to me about that is it seems to me, I thought we already came to some consensus that in terms of what would actually change, one and three were identical. So, if one and three are identical in terms of what they will actually effectuate in the world of law, then if one of them has to go to the Planning Board, both of them have to go to the Planning Board. Doesn't make any sense to me to say this one would and that one wouldn't. I also don't remember that what it says, where, when it says things have to go to the Planning Board, I don't remember that what it says in that ordinance makes really fine-tuned distinction about when you do and don't have to go to the Planning Board. You change the ordinance, gotta go to the Planning Board.
And that's used as a technicality before, so, yeah, you're right.
Yes, so it seems to me that either one of these would have to go to the Planning Board, and the only way to make an argument that it wouldn't have to go to the Planning Board would be to argue that they're actually due in very different court. Substantially, substantially, vague word, different things to be...
So, if you move both to the Planning Board and include them both in the public hearing, I would recommend that we add to the beordordained that the final form is filed with this ordinance in the actual proceedings of the council, because right now it's not.
That's fine, that's fine, in any case.
The only thing...
Doesn't in any case.
Yeah.
Doesn't in any case.
The only thing that I would say, then, if that's the case, if you're gonna pass ordinance number three, then the Law Department needs to go through, and it needs to fix every single section and attach the document that's actually there.
Okay.
Because then it'll be the same exact thing that document one does.
But I think we've already come to the consensus that either, in either case, they're going to the Planning Board, we're calling it a public hearing for it.
Sure, I don't see the public hearing legislation for ordinance number three, though.
Oh, you only drafted the public hearing for your amendments.
Right, because why would I draft an ordinance for number three if it technically didn't have to go in front of the Planning Board?
Well, you could...
I mean, there's a lot of contradicting information around here, and that's why I'm getting really aggravated that I spent...
We can still, without it in writing, we can say, if someone moves to resolve that proposed ordinance three and proposed ordinance one, that can still be done on the floor.
But why am I bringing it to the Planning Board? Why am I bringing it to the Planning Board if the city attorney just said that it doesn't need to go in front of the Planning Board?
Is that what you wanna do?
Well, I'm just saying, if she's saying it doesn't have to go there, then why am I doing that?
Why aren't you doing it right?
Right. It's, I mean, it's really, it's really contradicting itself. So, my recommendation, since ordinance number three doesn't have to go in front of the Planning Board, would be to move ordinance number one with the attachments to the Planning Board, call for the public hearing. That's it. And then we don't need to bring ordinance number three to the Planning Board. And it's, it's not that, it's not, it's really not that, it's really not that hard. So, I'll make a motion to bring ordinance number one to the Planning Board.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. I'm gonna process a motion on the floor.
Second.
There's a second.
All we're doing, this is the resolution to go to the, to go to the public hearing?
Yeah, because it's an ordinance, it's gotta have unanimous out the first time, so it would be for ordinance number one to go in front, to go to the Planning Board, then call for the public hearing, either rescind and replace it, or again, the ordinance has to be amended no matter what, okay, it has to.
Please state your motion on what you're calling the public hearing for.
The only thing that I want clarification, the only thing that I want clarification for...
No, no, I'm taking the floor back. No, we're done, we're done.
Do you amend ordinances, or do you amend Ecode?
Well, you can discuss that after.
Well, it needs to be clarified.
You, we all know that we amend ordinances, it's what's ordained, it's in the second-class cities law. So, what, can you please state the motion on the document you're calling for the public hearing on?
So, I would like to make a motion to bring ordinance number one to the Planning Board for a public hearing.
Second. All right, so there's a motion, a second.
There's already a motion, a second, something else to be thought about.
I think that was the same thing, I just wanted it restated, yeah, yeah.
So, this is the resolution calling for the public hearing?
Yes. Ordinance number, that's resolution number two.
So, here, hang on a second. They're gonna use this as the... Yep. Hang on, no, no, one stays, no, so here's my thought, right? Just give us a second up here, so we can make sure we keep the papers ready. Does the common council conduct a public hearing? That's fine, it's where it's...
Mr. President, can I have the floor first, so I can ask Corporation Council on that question?
Yes, but I do want to ask Councilperson Colosmo Testa and Corporation Council a question, because regardless of what goes on, the council's gonna do what the council does. So, for example, the resolution calling for the public hearing, the adoption of the new zoning code planned in the City of Buick, okay? This one obviously is paired with your amendments.
Yes.
But we're gonna verbally do the same thing for the new zoning code text.
Yes, yes, I have to make amendment to that on the floor as well.
But you have, but you have in this, the common council will conduct a public hearing.
Right, we have to call for a public hearing as well. So, the Planning Board has to give the recommendation.
I'm just, no, I'm just, after I just dealt with all this, I'm just making sure that, I don't have the zoning process in front of me right now. We have to, and they have to? They don't do it, we do.
No, right, that's what we're calling for, for a public hearing.
Your motion that you stated on the floor...
Right, was to send ordinance number one to the Planning Board.
Yeah, but, stop, stop for a second, I'm trying to just make sure we file this properly, because it's being recorded. Your motion on the floor, just rescind your motion, and when you make the motion, because that's what we're doing verbally on the floor, make the motion to resolve that the common council is calling for a public hearing on this. You made the motion that the Planning Board would call for a public hearing.
No, I said that the Planning Board received ordinance number one, and then we call for a public hearing. That's what I stated.
So, restate it.
So, I'd like to make a motion to send ordinance number one to the Planning Board, and the common council call for a public hearing on December 21, 2022.
Now, can you resecond that, if that's... Okay, that motion is now on the floor for a vote.
I would like to ask Mr. Giorgio another question. Sorry. Hypothetically, we're, hypothetically, some people in South Florida are really mad at us because we took their chickens away, and they take them for... Right? And now their lawyer...
I get to really cry. All right, keep going.
And their lawyers are gonna want to reference the law in, you know, in order to break their case. Are they gonna go to Ecode 360 and download it, or are they going to come to the clerk and say, "I'd like a copy of that zoning ordinance"?
Most attorneys are gonna probably look to Ecode, as that's what most of us do, that's the easiest form of...
He's searching.
Searching it. The reason I proposed the ordinance that I did is to reflect in legislative history, so when you go to the book, there is a copy that shows all of those new numbers from Ecode without having to do the actual work.
Right, just make it download, but that's fine.
But yes, Ecode is where most lawyers are gonna vote to look, because that's probably got the most, not always, most upstate.
Just for clarification, that's obviously, yeah, you asked a question on some, on this input, not specific to our... Yeah, the votes on the floor.
So, wait, so...
No, I don't want to get into that, I don't want to get into the opinion of which lawyers would use Ecode 360 versus the book, okay?
Because if you're gonna reference something and it's ordained a different section of the code, you're gonna want to be, you're gonna want the ordinance. That's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. Yeah, you search it, and then you do your job.
We can have a subjective conversation on our... They shouldn't be, just move on, please.
Because one's mine, and one's the mayor's.
Things started to diverge over the last three years, they shouldn't be, it's going back to normal.
One's mine and one's the mayor's.
All right, I'm calling back the floor.
Ridiculous.
Please vote on this.
Every side, yeah.
One, two, okay. All right, it's time for the vote.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's a resolution, Frank, it's not an ordinance.
Oh, yeah, this, this is just calling for the public hearing.
Holy cow!
This is calling for the public hearing.
Like, I'm that dumb, I would put out an ordinance without unanimous support, come on, Frank. I've been doing this nine years.
It's okay, it's okay.
Eight years longer than some...
Stop, would you please stop?
No, I've had enough, this is ridiculous.
I don't care, I'm calling for the floor, if we had a sergeant of arms, I'd have him tell you to stop right now.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, call the vote.
Six yeas.
All right, nothing's a waste of time, no matter how frustrating it is.
The only other thing that I have to do is I just, I just have to make
All right.
a couple amendments on the floor, because I gotta have the section numbers reflect the new zoning code that would be passed.
Move away.
Okay, thank you, so I've got to amend... So, I gotta amend...
We just called for a public hearing on the zoning code renumbering.
So, I've got to...
The way Samantha Colosmo Testa has proposed, okay?
So, the only other thing is I gotta amend proposed ordinance number 22, where it says ordinance amending the zoning code amendment to section 2-29-156. I have to amend both those sections to reflect now use table 125.
Yeah, correct.
So, when I originally did the ordinance,
Yeah.
I went by the ordinance, not by Ecode, so I have to amend it now to reflect...
Right, so which one of these are you looking at?
So, this one's the use table, remember how we said that we had to amend the zoning code every...
The ordinance numbers.
That's 22, that's adding the, adding a neighborhood convenience sort of section C. No, this is, this is just the, from the old, from the old one. I just gotta amend the section numbers, because they don't reflect the...
Move the pieces, if they get seconded, you can amend the section numbers.
Those, they're in committee.
So, now when you're changing that number, can you tell me the number again?
So, it's from 156
Yeah.
in both spots to section 125.
So, it's 229, 125.
Yep. And then that ordinance that would be submitted to the zoning board now would reflect this and what's on Ecode. And then I have to go to number 23, amendment to section 2-29-156, same thing, I have to change use table.
We have to do these one at a time, don't we?
Yeah.
It was only two knobs, they picked the first one.
Okay, and then the next, so I guess I'll stick with 22 first, so, because we gotta take a vote on that. So, I'd like to make a motion. Thank you.
All right, hang on one second, guys, for resolution one, right, and I'll explain that later. All right. All right, we're back.
Okay, sorry.
What did you move?
22, I've changed it, amended it from section 156 to 125.
Okay. Is there a second? All right, Williamson did the second. Now you can amend them.
You gotta take a vote.
If you see any opposed, the amendment in committee?
No, you gotta, that's what I'm saying, you gotta pull this out of committee to amend it.
Yes.
So, you're pulling...
And you're gonna vote?
Yes, that's what I just did, I pulled, I asked...
Any opposed, pulling from committee? I'm not gonna call in on the board. I mean, we were doing some paperwork over here when the first motion was made.
So, this is 22.
All right, so 22, motion to pull out of committee, any opposed? All right, it's on the floor for amendment, now please make the amendment.
Section 156 to 125, in both parts.
Strike and replace?
No, just amend.
Okay.
To state 125.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion to amend? Okay, now we can vote.
I'm sorry.
Vote on the amendment. Okay.
Okay, now I have to make a motion to pull table, or proposed ordinance number 23 from committee.
Is your intent that these are also gonna go to the Planning Board?
Yeah.
Are they gonna sit in committee until then?
They have to, they have to be...
Answer my question.
They have to be resubmitted to the Planning Board.
That's my point.
Because of the wrong sections.
That's my point.
So, I will make a motion...
We currently have a piece on the floor that either has to be voted on or put back in committee. Can you put 22 back in committee before you move on?
Yes, I'll make a motion to put it back in committee.
Thank you. Any opposed? It's in committee. Final form has to go to Planning Board, she's amending.
Yes.
There is a Planning Board meeting coming, so timing-wise, this could be done, if we do this now, that's why she wanted to do it, so, yeah. Legitimately, this could speed things up by a month.
Thank you, so I'll make a motion to pull ordinance 23...
Hang on, any opposed? It's in committee, all right, perfect.
I'd like to make a motion to pull proposed ordinance 23 out of committee.
Second.
Any opposed? Ordinance 23 is out of committee. Ordinance twenty-three is out of committee.
And I have to make an amendment to section, um, two dash two nine, one five six, to change it to, um, one twenty-five use table. In both, in both part, in both.
Clear the board, please.
Both parts.
Any opposed to the amendment? You have the floor.
I just have a quick comment.
That's cool.
Um, as far as the, the use table ones, I think I said at the last meeting, they're not in proper form.
I know they're not.
So, those are gonna have to be in proper form.
Right, they are in proper form.
Now?
Yes, yes.
Not referring to the section.
Not the language.
Not, um, the actual language.
Time out, what are you talking about?
Okay, so, the, I, I agree, the section headings and numbers
Correct.
Need to be changed and corrected to match Ecode, that's, that's fine. The actual text of those for the use table are not in proper form for the publisher.
What, what do you mean, in regards to what?
How they're written.
That's what, that's what the table says, blank.
No, I understand, but you have to, there's a, a correct way to do it, and I can do it and show it, so it's clear, but that's not clear to the publishers.
So, this is a piece of legislation that we've already submitted to the planning board, so you're telling me it was incorrect form that we've already submitted to them?
Yeah.
Even though we added the use table?
Yes, and I did indicate that at the last meeting, that those would need to be corrected.
And the judge answered that they were supposed to look at, right?
Well, it's not my fault that they're not looking at it, they've had a week and a half.
That aside, what's the nature of the change that needs to be made?
So, I don't have.
We're here now, so.
So, I don't have the, I don't have, does someone have the, just the use?
They taste the whole incorrect ordinance.
Alright, councilwoman, I'm, I'm gonna try and get this done tonight, and share this being, and get it out of here, so, as you were saying, use table, you need to see it?
Yes, but there's, the way that they were. Hold on, I may have.
Oh, Frank, just let her do it, we're doing it now, it's gotta get done.
Yeah, 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 after the fact, for sure, but if we wanna send it to the planning board, which is why we're here tonight, I don't wanna waste the fact that we're here. Yeah, but then the final forum won't be technically sent to the planning board. That's, so they're both correct in that sense, yeah. No, he's gonna grab the, the use table, if, if he can show her the table, she can tell you guys what to make a motion to make it look like, then.
I thought we made the amendment last meeting.
I, but, that's beside the point, let's, let's get it, you make the amendment, by way of motion, and then what gets sent to the planning board is what gets printed based on what you guys verbally say on the floor. And then it'll be proper, still, and done tonight.
So, it says, so I'm looking at, this is proposed ordinance number twenty-two, and sorry, I'm trying to follow with the one. But it says by amending, by adding it the neighborhood convenience store to section C commercial with use table blank. You can't just list it be blank, it would either be deleting what is there.
There's nothing there, we're adding, we're adding neighborhood convenience store, and leaving the use table blank.
Okay.
You mean a use table for the convenience store?
Yes. No, there's not, it's not confusing, because we had, we added neighborhood convenience store to the actual definition. Now, what we are doing, for the fifth thousand time, is adding section C to the use table, leaving it blank, that's all we're doing. And, and if you look at the symbol for use table, the, the terminology that you use is blank.
I mean, I, I.
Alright, so.
Blank.
Do we have the use table?
Blank.
Can you please bring that use table, or, Mr. George?
I, no, I have the, I have the use table, so if they're, so if they're adding a new section to the use table, I can just say I have one issue with that, you can't just list something in the use table and not allow it anywhere in the city, that's gonna be a huge red flag, number one.
That's for the planning board to review.
That it.
Right, so it'd have to go in front of the zoning board, it just means that it's not zoned for any of those.
Well, regardless, my point is that's for the planning board to review, and I would expect that they would provide that type of recommendation back to us, yes, okay. That's why we have to send things to them.
So, why are there other, why are there other tables in there blank?
Just.
No, why are there, that, I just want to.
I just wanna get this thing to the planning board.
Why are there sections in the use table that are all blank?
That's immaterial, do we wanna move this piece to the planning board, let's figure it out, do it the right way, or send what you have to the planning board, and then what happens, happens. So, what do we, your actual material comment, okay, I'm asking this right now, ignore everyone else in the room right now. The material comment that would cause the use table to be appropriate, in your opinion, from corporation council to go to the planning board, would be what?
For that one, if you just, as far as, if you just wanna leave it blank, then that one's fine, for the next one, I have an issue, the next ordinance.
Alright, explain that one, that was the one that we already, we already moved twenty-two, that's going there.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to.
Thank you.
So, for the next one, it says, blah, 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 neighborhood retail leaving the district row blank by removing S P from row, it should be that you're deleting, and you have to list off each of the sections that you're deleting, not just from the row, so, you're deleting.
That's how it reads in the.
Hold on, hold on, let her finish, let her finish, let, let's finish one.
So, for the use table for neighborhood retail. So, it would be, for neighborhood retail, it'd be deleting the permitted use in the central business district, for the urban mixed-use district, the neighborhood mixed-use district, the industrial district, the industrial mixed-use district, and the.
And that's what we agreed upon at the last, at the last time we amended it, by adding the use table in there. We, we literally said this.
I'm just saying, as written, that is not in proper form to be sent to the publisher.
Okay, so delete, so, so there's no point in adding the use table anymore, is what you're saying?
No, just, let's not be even mildly facetious.
I'm not being mildly facetious, but though that's what we agreed upon, that we would add the use table, which each of those districts in there, and by removing it.
Okay.
That's how we did, that's how we agreed upon it, at the end of the last meeting, that we would add the use table in there.
If it's not in proper form to go to the publisher, the publisher, meaning which publisher?
So, your final, so when, three sixty, so your final vote needs to be in proper form.
Can we just?
But I.
Can we just add it in my.
Here's the thing, I, and I'm not saying this to be facetious, but we just went through a whole conversation that if February third, twenty twenty-one, we could pass an ordinance that was not in the right form to go to the publisher, but put a little sentence at the end of it, saying they could fix it after. So, I wanna know if the content and intent of what she's trying to send to the planning board is wrong or not.
So.
I get if it's confusing.
So, if you wanna pass this as is, and I can submit it to the publisher as is, I can't tell you what they're gonna do with it, because it's not clear when I submit it to the publisher, what they're gonna do with it.
Right.
And it's not clear probably to planning board when they're looking at it, because you're not explicitly saying each and everything that you're doing and deleting and taking out.
Alright, so, can we make a list of explicitly what's being taken out?
Sure, absolutely.
And then, when it goes to the planning board, they will see that?
So, let's add the, let's add the use table in there, okay, with all the district rows above, and remove it.
Back up a second, twenty-three's currently on the floor.
Yep.
So, my suggestion, you do not need to add the use table, the language that just needs to be in there, it says, neighborhood retail, you're amending the use table section two dash twenty-nine dash.
Right this time.
It's actually, I think it's two dash twenty-five, is the section.
It wouldn't be each one anyhow, it would be, still be in one piece, if she's got the language now, let's list it.
So, you're, so it's neighborhood retail, by deleting.
By deleting.
A permitted use in the central business district.
Okay.
Permitted use in the urban mix district, urban, urban mixed-use, sorry.
Yeah, you want.
The permitted use in the neighborhood mixed-use district.
Okay.
The permitted use in the, in the industrial district.
Okay.
In the, the permitted use in the industrial mixed-use district. I'm using mixed-use campus, sorry.
So, you're deleting the whole row?
Keep going.
That would be the whole row, that is in proper form, because you're saying specifically what you're deleting and what districts you are not allowing that use to be permitted in.
Okay. Uh, councilperson Colosmo Testa, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
To include
Sure, absolutely.
The directions and text for what exactly is being deleted from the use table.
Wholeheartedly.
To ordinance twenty-three.
I'd like to make that motion.
Is there a second? Okay. Please vote on the board for that amendment. Unless you wanna do any opposed, but I mean, it's amended, out of committee, I like the any opposed. These ones I like to see on the board. Alright, amendment made, perfect. Uh, do you guys, do you guys wanna, um. No, no, we gotta, we gotta send this stuff to the planning board now, what, what's next?
Okay, so then we've gotta go, we gotta make a motion to pull, um, ordinance number twenty-four out of committee.
Okay, no, you gotta put twenty-three back in.
Oh, make a motion to put twenty-three back in the committee.
Okay, any opposed? It's back in, now you can pull what you'd like to pull.
I'd like to make a motion to pull ordinance number twenty-four out of committee.
Okay, any opposed? Twenty-four's out of committee. Anything on that one?
Yes.
Okay.
The proper form should be, um.
I can make the amendment for that, I get it now.
Alright.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to amend, uh, smoke shop, and removing, um, sex district CDB, or CBD, um, remove P, UMU, remove P, NMU, remove P, and IMU, remove B.
Is there a second? Which, the second would be removing, you're the second? Okay, any opposed to this amendment? Okay, any other amendments you need another one?
Yes, I've got three more, they've all, they all.
Alright, your amendment wasn't seconded yet anyways, that's fine, or your motion to put it back in committee wasn't seconded.
Make a motion to put it back in committee.
Did you have any other amendments?
I just finished that one.
On that piece, twenty-four?
I just did it, no.
Alright, so he just made the motion to put it back in committee, seconded.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, yeah, alright, so second his motion.
I'd like to make a motion to pull ordinance number twenty-five out of committee.
Hold on, any opposed to putting it back in committee, I still have to chair a meeting, even though we're kinda talking here, alright. No one's, no one's opposed to putting that back in committee, alright, pull the next one.
I'd like to pull ordinance number twenty-five out of committee.
Second.
Any opposed, it's out of committee.
I'd like to make a motion to amend, um, for it to say sex, from section one fifty-six to section one twenty-five.
Second for my fellow.
And then, I'd like to make a motion to.
Hold on, any opposed on that motion? No, alright, your next motion can move.
Oh, actually, that one's done, because we're, it's just removing, get the term convenience.
So, I just have an issue of how that's phrased, when you, when you're looking at that, it just says removing convenience from the term gasoline convenience stores, it should be, you either need to show some strike through or deletion, or how that reads, so I would say deleting, in quotes, convenience from the term, it's gotta be distinguished that we were.
Okay, no problem, I can do that, I'd like to make a motion to amend, to strike out gasoline, or strike out convenience from gasoline slash convenience store.
Council, or, uh, special counsel, or corporation counsel, special counsel's not here. She just made a motion to strike gasoline.
Oh, convenience, not gasoline.
Her convenience, sorry, would that be the same as what you were saying?
Yeah, I would just put it in quotes, so it's clear that you're referring to that convenience in that sentence, not, because you're just taking out the text.
You would be convenience from, from the term gasoline convenience, right?
So, just put a big strike, right through the word convenience.
Alright, Williamson seconded the amendment.
Thank you.
Any opposed? To eating dinner?
Refer as amended.
Thank you very much, is there a second, Burmaster's the second? I like it, we're getting, we're getting the flow here, any opposed? Anything else, councilwoman?
Okay, I gotta make a motion to pull ordinance number twenty-six out of committee.
Alright.
And I've got a. I gotta make a motion to amend, um, from it to section one fifty-six to one twenty-five.
Second.
And then I've got a.
Hang on, we got a second to that amendment, alright, there's a second, any opposed to that amendment? Okay. As you were, the next, the next motion to amend?
I don't under, I don't know what other language, um, needs to be in there, because removing S P from the NMU district and leave it blank as well.
So, I have no idea what you're referring to.
You don't know removing, removing special permit from the neighborhood mixed-use district and leaving it blank?
For what use?
Not allowed, blank, if you go to.
For the entire section of automotive, automotive repair, auto body shop, car wash, gasoline.
Neighborhood mixed-use.
That's a district.
That's a district.
That's a district.
Automotive.
You don't say which.
There's been a lot of tension all the way around the room, I'd like to ask everyone to just bring it down a notch, so we can figure this out, because we're here, it's a sanctioned meeting, thank you.
Oh, it was gas, I'm sorry, yes, it's, it was gasoline convenience, or gasoline, um, station.
Okay.
So, my recommendation would then be to say, by deleting this S P for the urban mixed-use.
Neighborhood mixed-use.
Neighborhood mixed-use, and go, and it is allowed by site plan approval in two other districts, so that's not included in that.
Right.
I would just make that.
This one was only changing in.
Neighborhood mixed-use, correct. Yep.
So, then you do, then that just needs to be clear that you're referring to the gasoline convenience station.
Yep, so I'd like to motion to amend that. Gasoline convenience, gasoline station.
The motion's on the floor, why don't you restate it, so someone will second it?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to remove, um, special permit from the neighborhood, uh, use district, um, for gasoline station, and leave it blank.
Any opposed? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to refer this back to committee, please, Mr. President.
Second.
I'm gonna go, Burmaster on that one. Any opposed?
I gotta, I gotta make a motion to pull ordinance number twenty-seven out of committee.
Second.
I gotta change, um, section one twenty-five, uh, to two dash two nine dash eight five, and both.
Two dash two nine dash eight five?
Yep, in both sections.
Second.
Yep, two dash two nine dash eight five.
Any opposed? To the motion? Or, well, the amendment, the motion that is the amendment. Okay, that amendment passed as well.
I'd like to make a motion to refer this back to committee, please, Mr. President.
Okay.
Um, the only other, um, legislation that I'd like to introduce to the floor, and then put it back into committee, is rescind and replace, uh, chapter two dash two nine zoning.
Which one is this?
That's ordinance number one, I'd like to make a motion to bring it to the floor, and then put it back in the committee.
Oh, right, and then you gotta call for them, or we did call for a public hearing.
Yeah.
You didn't call for the public hearing and the other stuff yet, by the way.
No, we did, I just had to make the amendment, so now we just gotta refer those pieces to planning.
Alright, ordinance number one is introduced, is there a second? There's a second. Ordinance number one is the piece we had the giant discussion about, does everyone understand that before we move forward? Okay, uh, would anyone like to place that in committee? Well, no, it, it, to put it in committee. Right, that's my point, so it's been introduced, it's motion and second.
We, we just introduced it to the floor, and now we gotta put it back in the committee.
We. Thank you, alright.
Uh, Mr. President, I also like to refer the number three, that's offered by our corporate counsel, also in the committee.
Okay, any opposed? Perfect, that's in committee as well, now, hold on a second, the public hearing we called earlier, just to go back, so I was trying to field all the motions in order here. What was that public hearing, that was originally resolution two, you did it verbally just for resolution one.
Ordinance one.
Ordinance one.
Right.
So, you also need to call for a public hearing on all of the ones you just amended and put back in committee, and send those to planning board.
We've already put them, we've already made a motion, we've already called for a public hearing on those ordinances, we just amended the sections, which now has to be preferred back to the planning board.
Did you also refer those at the last meeting? I don't have the minutes in front of me.
I did, I did, and the problem is, is that I can't.
Hold on a second.
Listen to me, connect, just for one second.
No, I have to ask a question to the full council here, not just you, the last meeting, those were obviously introduced and placed in committee, which is why we were able to pull them out and amend them. Right, now, at that meeting, did we, did we refer those to the planning board?
Yes.
You're certain, because I don't have the minutes in front of me.
We called for a public hearing to refer to, to the.
You called for the council public hearing, and sent it to the planning board?
Yes.
I really think, before we walk out of here, as much, like, I wanna leave as much as everyone else. But I don't wanna waste the time that we were here for. Thank you. I think that's how it happened, but. I'm just wondering what's coming.
I think we should take out this thing about having to go to the planning board, because we already have a history of ignoring their advice, um, you know, hence my, hence my unhappiness.
Okay.
Would we, I don't know, I mean, Brian, can you tell us why that was put in there in the first place, what the, what the intent was of making us get advice from the planning board, even though we have no legal obligation to take it?
Well, first off, I defer to the corporation counsel on this, but it may be a requirement of general, we miss pull-up, I have to check on that.
I think it is, it's second-class city.
It doesn't say that in the actual ordinance, then, for the zoning code.
Hang on a second.
But, but, oh, wait, no, so, that means it's a fairly new second-class city law that was not in place the last time we passed a zoning ordinance?
No, our prior zoning, you had to do the same thing.
Oh, okay.
I had you on the, on the previous ordinance, the planning board had held it till public hearing.
Yeah, it was, it was even longer, yeah.
So, the difference actually made, made the process a little bit more streamlined, not less so.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, alright, I take it all back.
No, we can't, we gotta verify.
Now, we're ready for the clerk to confirm.
I'm not gonna burn the last hour and a half, because we didn't confirm one little detail. Yeah.
No waste of time, man.
If I'm gonna be here and share.
That's what discussed me.
Councilperson friend. Just in my opinion, even if the council threw. And the council's calling for the public hearing, alright, I'm looking at it, it's going to the planning board, and eighteen through thirty-five, according to this, are, uh, we have a public hearing now.
Our inquiries were correct.
Yes.
Make a motion secure and second.
The ordinance numbers are still the same, no, hold on, I'm not processing the motion adjourned.
It's not the intended.
It's not, the intent did not change.
All right, stop, stop, stop.
Wait, I know, I, I don't know, but I know that in, in the pre-meeting, there was discussions to have the judge look at everything, so, I don't know what happened during the actual meeting, so, I, I just wanna make that point.
There was no, like, resolution or motion passed that that's required prior, nor would it matter, majority vote is a majority vote. So, before we adjourn, because I'm not gonna process the motion adjourned, I mean, you guys can walk out, do we feel that we need to repass this public hearing based on the ones that were done tonight?
It's, it's, it's the 21st, it's not gonna affect anything, so if you want, if you wanna re, if you wanna resubmit it?
Well, the names of the ordinance has changed.
No.
The names were not changed?
Just the numbers, the section numbers.
The numbers.
The content of the ordinance was changed. Because the names of the ordinances are the ones that should be sent to the planning board. So I would make a motion on the floor.
I could do that.
Ask, requesting that the clerk send the current dated November 21st amended versions to the planning board for review.
I'd like to make a motion that all of the amended legislation from tonight be replaced in, in, and sent to the-
Sent to the planning board.
Sent to the planning board, update the amended version of the-
And why it's so important that-
All right, can, can someone, can someone just second that motion?
That's okay, but the, the hearing thing, that everybody, we voted on both, that has to be amended too.
Well, that's why I'm saying, why don't we just repass this?
Yeah, that's fine, that's what we just did.
All right, so, here's, here's what we're gonna do, we have a piece dated November 16th, 2022, it called for, uh, let me just read this really quick, I'll summarize it, whereas the Utica County Council proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, proposed amendments will be referred to the planning board on December 15th, 2022, okay? So, um, would someone like to take this from me right now, move it, and it will be dated today as the final resolution that we dealt with tonight?
We have to rescind that one, or you can say, as amended, anybody who minds doesn't matter, but you have to rescind the one that we already did.
Good vote to reconsider, you wanna move to reconsider this? All right, thank you. All right, there's a motion to reconsider, resolution 14 dated November 16th, 2022, is there a second to that motion? Okay. All right, uh, reconsider, any, any opposed to reconsideration? Okay, now that we voted to reconsider, it's on the floor for a vote again.
I'd like to make a motion to bring it to the vote. What do you gotta amend?
Technically, this piece doesn't have to be amended, uh, because it didn't reference in the content when these were passed, it just has the titles.
The sections are correct.
So did we reconsider it, just in North and Bodog, exactly, or the-
It's crazy.
Yes.
Hungry, man.
I know, all right, any opposed to this?
If the section's correct.
Are these the same titles that we currently have, after, after the amendments? I think they are. Yeah, that's, that's why I kept asking, in, in the title. So here's, here's what you need to do, come over here real quick, this is gonna take one minute.
I'm gonna do this right, I have to do it right.
Yep, all right, see these? See where it says 2, 2, 2, 2, 2?
Technically, the ordinance is correct, I mean, E code's not correct, advancing the ordinance, so that's why, I mean, they give-
Come on, let's do it, do it right.
All right, gotta vote again?
Make, no, 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 make those match, the section numbers that we just amended.
This is why-
And then vote on it.
Our zoning code has to make-
Listen, I'm sick of hearing that, it's just, we, we got this, this is sideways right now, we're writing it.
It's a waste, it's wasting my time. Okay, so I've gotta, I've gotta amend ordinance 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26, um-
And you replace?
How about it was in today?
To, to go from section 2 dash 29 dash 125.
Is that, is that across all of them?
Yeah, yeah, and then the-
All right, is there a second?
Second.
And then the last one-
Any opposed? Done.
Is ordinance number 29, um, no, ordinance number 27, has to be amended to say 2 dash 29 dash 85.
All right, any opposed? Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Your votes. Any opposed to that resolution? Are you asking for the floor? Now you guys can make a motion to adjourn if you want.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, glad we all can get together before.